All right, we are going to reconvene the city council meeting from closed session and begin with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. About indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. The council is returning from closed session. We do have one item to report, and I think it's very good news. We have, we have a verbal acceptance from the city manager who will be beginning in January of 2025. We wanted to wait until after the holidays. Once we have a signed agreement and more details, we'll share them with the, with the city. And then, other than that, we have no actions to report from the closed session. All right, so with that, let's just get right into tonight's agenda, approval of the agenda. So are there any questions or comments from the councillors about the agenda? Okay, all right, any questions or comments from members of the community regarding tonight's agenda? We're going to talk about consent agenda here, so if you want to mention anything there, we can.
Not now.
Right, not now. Okay.
Move to approve the agenda for this evening.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have minutes to review tonight from October 8th. Are there any questions or comments from the council on minutes? I didn't see any problem with them, okay. Any comments or questions from the public on the minutes from October 8th? I've seen none, back to the council for approval.
I move to approve the minutes.
It's the app to break a second, all right, Katie seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up are council reports and committee assignments. I'll start with, to my right, Doc.
I have nothing to report.
Okay.
So Jack West and I and Eli met with the Yurok Tribal Council last week, I think it was, week before. Last week, thank you. And what we did was discuss some of the projects that are going on, but also really asked for replacement. We had a tribal council member on several of the Trinidad city activities, most notably the Trails Committee. So they are working on finding a tribal council member, which is one of the Trails Committee, to include their voice in the Trails activities. And they also very much asked for the city of Trinidad to consider the Yurok Tribe in many, if not all, of our activities. So I just wanted to pass that on, that there was a sort of a uniform interest from the Yurok Tribal Council that Trinidad give a little more voice to the Yurok community, include them in the decisions made in our city. So I just wanted to pass that on. And then Humboldt Transit Authority. I missed the meeting, so my work got in the way, so I'm unable to report on that. The Redwood Region Economic Development Commission continues to work with local agencies on the wind project in the, in the region. That's something that we're all part of, and so they're, they're a big part in the wind energy and, and bringing that to the community. And there was a presentation by the funding source, the Headwaters Fund, that was very enlightening about how economic development is supported in this community. And so there's a continued large investment in this community for, for economic development. So I just wanted to pass that along as well.
Anything? Nothing to report. The Animal Advisory Committee's meeting tomorrow night here at 6 o'clock, and it's open to the public.
Although I'll be leaving the council after December, I have asked to stay on to help with the Trail Committee. So we're going to try to bring back the Trail Committee that we, we've lost a little bit because of many things in my life. So I didn't get to get a meeting going, but we do, we are going to meet hopefully in January and try to put together a file, look at some various kinds of votes and seem to have a good crew that wants to join us. So the next meeting will be in January and we'll continue working on the, on the Trail, Trails, try to get them ready for the summer.
I just have a couple of quick ones. The Humboldt County Association of Governments, or HCOG, we met, they met a couple of weeks ago and I attended the meeting. Probably the most salient things were the Humboldt Bay Trail update. So the trail that's going from Arcata to Eureka that we're all seeing work on, they're making really good progress. But they do feel like they're going to have to stop work for the winter rains. And their estimated completion date now is May 31st, 2025. They're also working on the Hicksherry Trail from Eureka to College of the Redwood. And that'll be a trail on the rail corridor that starts off at that Thule parking lot. And, but that's a long-term project, I think they're estimating 2030 for that. But eventually you'll be able to kind of ride your bike from Trinidad all the way to, to the College of the Redwoods. So that's kind of cool, let's see. Ride Humboldt still has a, has implemented some more low-cost transit, like Arcata to Reading for $2 and so forth, and $2 to Ukiah. So their executive director, however, resigned in the last meeting, and so they are searching for a new executive director. So that's kind of what was going on.
It's, okay.
Pardon, yes. We had a brief meeting with California State Parks. Eli and I met with them. They're going to have some availability, they think, next summer to subcontract to the city if we need help with trail work. So that's pretty exciting. We had them look just from the top of Axalingra Memorial Trail, and we also walked the Van Wijk Trail. They made some suggestions on Van Wijk, one of which our city engineer doesn't think would work. But their basic recommendation was to go up slope and then also maybe put in steps. They feel like it's pretty slumpy as it is, technical term, so that, you know, definitely when going up slope was kind of their main recommendation. And then the last thing is the Community Emergency Response Team. We have Larry Goldberg here tonight, he'll be presenting on that. So that's it for me.
Can I add something real quick?
Yes.
Just to, to sort of reach out to the community, and I see Bryce and Carrie are here. The Humboldt Transit Authority and the Redwood Region Economic Development, I've been on both of those boards for the last eight years. And even though Trinidad is a small town, you know, we're not major contributors to the county overall. I do encourage to have an active Trinidad voice in both of those committees. The Redwood Region Economic Development is just everywhere, from, from Oryc to Scotia and everywhere in between. And having a Trinidad voice, I think, is really critical, and I know that economic development, you know, we're one square mile and we don't have a lot of vacant lots, but economic development is still a concern or a consideration for our community. And certainly transit, you know, getting from here to anywhere else is, is challenging. And Redwood, sorry, Humboldt Transit Authority is doing a, a lot of work that's actually getting recognized by the state for its, you know, connecting to other systems and whatnot. So I really encourage some strong involvement from Trinidad moving forward in, in the new year. So I just want to put that out there.
Now you've reminded me of something else. So for, for Redwood Economic Development, I think you and I spoke about they may have grant opportunities, and so we can connect with Angela. But we were thinking that maybe Eli had a good idea to get some grant funding for economic development for Trinidad. So they, you know, we could get a grant, a small grant for them to kind of evaluate how we could improve, you know, business here in Trinidad for our, you know, our local small businesses and so forth, and that could be advantageous.
The Headwaters Fund, which is the main contributor to Redwood Region Economic Development, like you said, actually that was our last presentation in the last meeting, and they, they said it. It's funny with granting agencies, they're like, please come and take our money. It's a lot of work to ask for money, right? Angela can, is over there nodding for sure. And they literally said, please come ask us for money and we'll help you develop an economic development plan. That's a gift, right? That, that, an organization that has a ton of money wants to help you figure out how to ask for a ton of money. So really encourage that involvement. So I, and I pass that on to Cheryl, so it's not lost on my board memory, it's actually in Cheryl's wheelhouse, so, yeah.
Okay, any questions or comments from the council on the committee reports? None, any questions or comments from the public, members of the public on any of the committee reports? All right, then we will move on to tonight's staff reports from the city manager and Humboldt County Sheriff's Office. Do we have Lieutenant McCall on tonight?
Yeah, so Josh is not here from.
Okay.
Sheriff's Office. So my staff report. First of all, the water tank and pipeline project. The contractor poured the tank foundation for the new 250,000 gallon steel tank this past Saturday. Also polymer pump at the plant, the water plant, had to be replaced. And the one where we replaced it with is a little bit larger and seems to be functioning very well. And some of the comments I got from staff is that the water seems to be at the peak, is the best they've ever seen over the years. We're also asking water customers, they're going to do a mailer, and we included it on Water Bill, asking them to conserve water since we are transitioning to the new 250,000 gallon steel water tank. So in the meantime, instead of having two 150,000 gallon tanks that are Redwood that are operating, we only have one. So we hope people can conserve to allow basically march. The Trinidad head steps, we have RCA working on that project. They've replaced most of the steps, they are going to replace a few more, and, and it should be done whether it's returning within the next couple of weeks. Also, the Axalingra Memorial Trail, we wanted to do vegetation removal. We got the green light this past week after we got all of the entities saying that yes, we can move forward. So we notified RCA who's going to be doing the work and according, per the weather, and also getting the contract in place, then they'll start doing that vegetation removal, which will help show us what the future trail will look like for the Axalingra Memorial Trail. Because the base of it needs to be redirected where it is a safer entry to the beach. And also a historic one, because that's the original trail that was used by the Jirai. Also, speed humps have been placed on View Street, and they started doing Ocean also. Could be done hopefully by the end of the week, depending on the rain. So we are going to be having rain this, for the next three, four weeks, on and off. And then the holidays, Town Hall was closed yesterday for Veterans Day, and will be closed not only Thanksgiving, but the day after Thanksgiving, that Friday. So we just wanted to inform the public, this will be the second year that we're doing that, it's a holiday on that so-called Black Friday. And then the Chamber is planning their second New Year's Eve celebration. It'll be here in Town Hall, so that's December 31st. And last year they had a great turnout and real good, people who were here enjoyed it. So that's all that I have right now, if there's any questions, I'll entertain.
Just a quick question about the speed humps, Eli.
Yeah.
I know I, I walked up there today and I saw the ones on View, and I believe, do we have one on Ocean and then the second one? Do we have a timeline for the second one yet? I know we're still in dialogue.
With the weather, yeah, we, we'll, we'll be doing it depending on the weather within the next week or two.
Okay, so there's no other holdup at this point?
Well, we, we're, we're going to clarify exactly the location of it.
Okay.
But, yeah, it's, it's between two parcels right now.
Okay, okay. But the plan is to go ahead, it just may move slightly one way or the other.
Exactly.
Right, I just wanted to confirm that because I got some questions about it.
Sure.
Any other questions for Eli from the council? All right, questions on the staff report from members of the community? Please come, would you mind coming to the podium so they can answer them? Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. I'm curious if you guys kind of putting any of the speed funds leading up to the school? On Main Street.
Yeah, no, no, there are no plans for that.
Do you think there ever would be, and people drive pretty fast coming into the school?
Yeah, I, I don't think so, because we want traffic to go from Main Street to Trinity Street to the harbor on Edwards. And so you're going to have all kinds of like either semi trucks, trucks with pulling boats. You know, buses and so on, so that's the commercial traffic route. The reason that we put it on Ocean and View is that we didn't want commercial traffic going on the residential streets.
Yeah. And the, the bowl boughs were meant to slow traffic down. So if we're still experiencing high speed, we should let our traffic engineer know that maybe there's other techniques we might, we might need to employ to slow people down.
Yeah, and I was thinking we should look at the traffic study again, we could look at that again and see, you know, because we did have a traffic study, and we, I think it was a couple of months ago that we reported, they reported out to us. And, and it did show the number of, you know, the traffic flow and volume and also speeds. And we should take another look at that, but we, we didn't see a lot of speeding in the traffic study. But that's just, that's a point in time, but yeah.
It's just maybe the few people that you're really like, oh my gosh.
Right.
I guess that doesn't make the average.
It does happen, I know, yeah. Gabe and I have been standing out in front of the Town Hall before, you know, kind of yelling at people, so. Like, slow down.
It's a good point, it's around that corner, because people zip around, they don't see the school until the last minute and they're already going pretty quick. So maybe we can ask our engineer, see how we can slow the people around that corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't say prior is the corner, it seems like people are coming in pretty quick. And then sometimes when they see the school, they slow down sometimes.
It wouldn't hurt to put a school zone ahead kind of thing, maybe on the, whatever this, I can never remember the name of the streets around here. The, the one coming in from the freeway.
Yeah.
Yeah, Main, Main Street, right, right by Stagecoach.
Yeah.
About 15 mile an hour, and we have the school zone sign, but maybe, but, so we'll look at it, yeah. I, I think we're going to need to look at it again.
I've also had a request to look at Main Street, see if there's a way to slow traffic a little bit more on Main Street, which would help, keep the tracks all the way to that corner, so that's another place to get to start.
Would it be possible to have actually a gate? Because a lot of the children just run out the school, and there's no like separation between them and the street. So is there any way to have like some type of railing?
That's something that of course the school.
Yeah, we could work with.
You know, another thing, we could get a roundabout, like, ride off the freeway and get rid of the stop. Yeah, would also be, that's something we've talked about for quite a while, maybe potentially with it. We have slowing things down as they come into the city, so all these ways of slowing traffic would be, we'll be looking at probably with your yourself.
Thank you. Other comments about the staff report from the public? All right, seeing none, then I'm going to go on to items from the floor. And at this time, members of the public can comment on things that are not on tonight's agenda. So I'll open it to the public to anything you'd like to comment on. All right, I don't see any hands raised. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and move on to tonight's consent agenda. I'll bring it to the council first, are we comfortable with the consent agenda?
I wondered if we could pull item four?
Okay. Okay, well, so I'm going to go to the members of the public and see if there's any comment about pulling that item and/or anything else that only consent.
Would it be pulling it from the agenda in?
For discussion.
Oh, just put it, we're going to get, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we would be putting it first on the agenda. So I'm going to go to the members of the public, any comments, questions, or concerns about the consent?
Right, scanning 462 Ocean. I'm in favor of pulling it from consent agenda.
Okay. All right. That, anything else from the public on the consent agenda? Okay, I don't see anything, so I'll bring it back to the council. We do, I believe, need to vote on this because it's changed to the agenda. Is there a motion to pull it?
I recommend we pull item number four from consent and put it in number three, after the unmet transit need and community emergency response, just to respect our, our speakers.
Our guest speakers. I agree with that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so with that, we will move then, we will pull from the consent agenda, item number four, and we will put it after the unmet transit needs and the community emergency response update. So with that then, we will go ahead and start with our regular item number one on the agenda.
We should probably vote on it. We just pulled something, we didn't pass the rest of it.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
No, that's, I told you I'd be one last time.
Okay, so let's, let's make another motion, please.
Accept the consent.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks for keeping me on the straight and narrow there. Let's start with our agenda item number one, annual unmet transit needs hearing. I'll turn it over to staff and to HCOG. We have someone?
Yes, yes, hello, my name is Michelle Nielsen. I am the contract planner for HCOG, and thank you for having this agenda item this evening and for enabling me to participate remotely. So I got a presentation, it's brief, and I did share it with the city clerk earlier today. So that could, if there's interest in the community, the council, to, to take a look at it, if that's available. And also, following my presentation, tonight's ask is for the city council to open the public hearing to allow residents to comment on transit needs in Humboldt and Trinidad. Then followed by closing the public hearing and directing staff to provide a summary of that input to the HCOG. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, and hopefully we don't have too many glitches here. Let's see here. And go with this. Come on. Okay. Oh, let me get my, okay, this will work. Okay, so I just kind of gave my introduction. Oops, see, get my pointer in the right place. So, oh, my slide did not advance. Let's try this again. Okay, here we go. So an overview of the unmet transit needs process is that kind of a quick summary is provided on this slide. It is part of the Transportation Development Act, which provides funding for transit, and this is a state law. It's a public, an unmet transit need is a public transportation need that is not being met by the current public transportation system. This process identifies and evaluates the adequacy of existing transportation services. And locally, the process involves public hearings, the release of an online survey, and receiving comments by email and phone call at the HCOG office. We're accepting comments through the end of the year, so through to December 31st. And the online survey, which is in English and Spanish, will be open and available for folks to complete till the end of the year as well. So unmet transit needs at a minimum are, hits, hits one of these boxes. So requested trips from residents who don't have access to transit or specialized transportation or private transportation services. Or it could be requested trips from residents who do not have the resources, the means to travel for medical appointments, shopping, social activities, employment, and that sort of thing. It can be public transportation or specialized transportation that are identified in a regional transportation plan. And that there's sufficient broad-based support. This means that, that the persons are most likely to use the service on, on the regu, on a regular basis have demonstrated support for that, that transit service. So, so first, is there an unmet transit need? And those are identified, then is that need that's been identified, is it reasonable to meet? And there's this definition, along with the previous one, is there's requirements in the Transportation Development Act, but there is some flexibility so that the local organization, HCOG in this case, can make some adjustments to it so better reflects local needs. So the unmet transit needs definition, this reasonable to meet criteria have been adopted by HCOG, and that was last reviewed and adopted in December of 2023. So reasonable to meet criteria must be operationally and financially feasible, you know, that the, the transit can get to and from that location, the roadways are adequate. There's sufficient funding available from identified sources to pay for the marginal operating cost for three years. The service must be projected to meet a minimum, minimum marginal fare box return ratio of 10% within 10 years. And reasonable to meet criteria, you can't compare transit, unmet transit needs with the needs for straight streets and roads. That, that's actually out of state law. And should a service be initiated, one that was found to be unmet, and also to meet the reasonable to meet criteria, if it's implemented, it, there is, as part of this process, it's regularly evaluated in the first one or two years of service to ensure it meets certain thresholds that are actually in the HCOG part of their definition that, in that documents available on the website. So just, this slide kind of gives an overview of where we're at. So we're in the public comment period, which runs through to the end of the year. That's followed by compiling all that input and reviewing it with the transit providers, and then prep, preparation, a draft report that will go to the Social Services Transportation Advisory Committee for recommendations on the, that report and the, the findings. And again, in, an opportunity for input from the operators and the public. And then ultimately in May, about May of the next year, would be the adoption of that report by the Board of the, of HCOG. And so there are some known transit needs, these are heard, come up pretty frequently in the process. And some of these are going to be met or better met in the future. I'll go a little bit more over that in a minute. So more frequent service, earlier and later service during the weekdays, Sunday service on RTS, that's the, the main regional line. And then later night service on Friday and Saturday between Arcata and Eureka. So these, these are things that we frequently hear. So just briefly, kind of a snapshot of ridership changes on the various HTA routes over time. This slide shows that RTS and ETS, they're, they are recovering from where after the pandemic, which would be this orange kind of rust-colored block. So they're continuing, ridership is continuing to improve. The Southern Humboldt is similar, similarly situated. Willow Creek has seen a, seen a big increase, and is actually, their ridership is over what it was before the trans, the pandemic started. And the last batch here shows dial ride. They had been recovering, but this last fiscal year, they actually saw a decline. And I'm not, I'm not sure what the circumstances of that. For the Willow Creek, increase that relates to providing transit to students to and from Willow Creek, who reside in Willow Creek, and they, they go to school and commonly in Arcata. So that's why their ridership is seen, is at the levels of this. And then, so over this last fiscal year, the ridership is at 480, over 480,000 passenger trips. And then this just kind of provides similar data, just over a longer span of time, beginning in 2010, ending in 2024. So seeing, seeing the increase, this last year, the rate of increase was lower than between 2022 and 2023, but it is continuing to increase. but it is continuing to increase. And then, Arcata, the Arcata system, this is showing that their trend has been to continue to increase, with 29% increase, while the red line at the bottom shows HSU enrollment. So that system is continuing to see increased ridership, although Cal Poly enrollment is actually still a little bit lower than what it was at the beginning, just before the pandemic. And then, going over, this is kinda gonna just give a quick summary of Humboldt Transit Authority's accomplishments, and what they're doing, things that are coming up, adding hydrogen fueling station, hydrogen buses, the development of Inter-Mobile Transit Center in Eureka. And these efforts, along with others, have been boosted by a grant they were awarded, I think it was the end of last month, for 18.7 million, that will expand the fleet of lower emission vehicles, improve information to transit riders, basically make information, arrival and departure information real-time, which would be a big help, and increase frequency of service. And also some capital improvements, improving the bus stop designs, and improved lighting and security enhancements. Some other things, actually, these were mentioned earlier, some of these unified branding and fairs has been implemented. You probably see the Ride Humboldt logo on the buses now that come through Trinidad, Tap to Pay, the Flex Rider, which is a micro-transit pilot project. This is an on-demand shared ride transit service that operates from bus stop to bus stop. It's had a soft launch in the Greater Humboldt Bay Area. What it uses, open spots on Dial Ride buses is what it does. So in 2025, this Flex Rider program will launch in McKinleyville with transit between McKinleyville and Arcata through a grant that was awarded for that project. And then the North State Express, the Route 101, this launched in early 2024, the $2 from Eureka to Ukiah. And this had ridership, it was over 600 riders between January and June, so. And there's others, so you can basically connect now using transit from north of Trinidad into Del Norte, all the way down into the Bay Area. So, and over into Reading, as was mentioned. So, if members attendees this evening, or maybe friends they may know, if they have questions or would like to provide more input on transit needs in the community, this slide has the, obviously, the email address and the phone number for HCOG, and can provide that information. And also, we have an online survey in both English and Spanish that will be open until the end of the year. And another real important point is, and I heard it mentioned, that HTA has been really successful in getting grants. And part of that, what's really key, is that public input. So even if maybe input comments we get, they may not be an unmet, meet all the criterion tests for an unmet transit need, but that information is still compiled and used as documentation to support all these grant applications. So basically, all input is valuable. And we're be interested in hearing what the community and the council has to say. And that concludes my presentation. I can stop sharing my screen and hand it back. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Well, we'll see if we have any questions or comments here, excuse me, in the room, and then folks can go to the website to add more input. Council, are there any things you'd like to?
Yeah, great presentation. One opportunity that I've been requested by other people is like a Trinidad trolley loop. You know, you start at the park and ride, so all the tourists park at the park and ride. They go to Sumay, they go to the harbor, they perhaps maybe go to the rancheria, but they do a loop. And we just keep people, tourists park at the, not filling up our streets in the summertime.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
You can charge money on that, and I think it'd be a good return on investment, so.
Yeah, I would second that, I think that's a great suggestion. I don't know if it's something Humboldt Transit Authority could tackle, but it seems like as a pilot.
Yeah.
It'd be a good.
There is a Trinidad trolley in Colorado, and it's doing quite well. So, yeah.
Did they call you or something? Because I get calls from Doug. Okay, so let me, any other comments from the council? So great suggestion, any suggestions or comments from the community regarding transit? I'm just curious, if you guys don't mind, I wouldn't mind doing just a quick little survey in the room with, by show of hands, how many of us in the room are taking public transit on a regular basis? Well, or at all, yeah. Okay, so we have three, probably three people, maybe four out of, what, 25 of us or so? So it's a small percentage, but it is a percentage nonetheless, and so we wanna, I think the, I was a big fan of the micro-transit, and we discussed that last time. So I'm looking forward to hearing how that goes in McKinleyville. Okay, I think that's it, then thank you, Ms. Nielsen. Oh, sorry, we do have one more comment, please.
I think I have a comment on the unmet transit needs. It would be really helpful, I know it was mentioned on the slide, but to get a Sunday service, since that used to be a service that was run by Humboldt Transit, or it got cut some years ago. That'd be really helpful for like social functions, to balance like making it to church, you know, out of a tiny city area and going down to Arcata. I'm a college student, so I'm really grateful to be able to make those, you know, connections down to the college. But something I want to mention is it's like roughly three times as long as kind of to take the bus down to the college, and that's because it's quite a meandering loop. So that's kind of like, unmet transit is like, you know, like a timely way to get down to college classes. Like I have an eight-hour test of the skills, but I could do it at six, catch the bus. So it's just kind of really janky, and that would be my number one. Maybe faster service and Sunday service, please, thank you.
Great, thank you. And we have more comments?
Thank you very much for all your hard work. We've lived here for 22 years, he was born here, worked for Arcata House Partnership for 24 years. I would love, I love all the hard work that, and the plan that we're gonna do for the future bus route. I try to take it as much as I can, but I can either do a seven-hour shift, or I can do a 10-hour shift. So if you can have a little bit more frequent buses, and it is, like I said, about an hour trip to go down, and an hour, almost an hour back, I think, so really makes the day really long. But we thank you so much for all that you're doing.
Thank you.
Come on, and I am on the SSTAC, so I do input that way too. What I'd like to say is, you never consider Trinidad as a destination. So many people come here, and of course they bring their cars, and they bother. If we had a better bus service from Eureka or wherever, people would just leave their cars in Eureka and come to Trinidad. And I just wanted also to give a small version, because I do the whip without driving regularly. So to get someplace in McKinleyville at 8:30, I think, at 6:30, walk in the dark, unseen, drive with the flashlights, nonetheless almost run over by speeding truck or SUV, hard to tell in the dark and at high speed, four people waiting for the 6:45 bus in Trinidad. And then, you know, I went to what I went to. To get home, I had a couple of errands, but the next bus home couldn't come until 11:30, so I went to the senior center and met some people there. But it doesn't value the individual's time. It's considered that you take the bus if you're absolutely desperate. And we all get old, we all have difficulty driving at night eventually. Or you could have your knee replaced or something, you have a car, you don't have somebody to drive you, you're in deep, deep trouble, so that's my comment.
Thank you.
Nice, that's something. Great comments, and again, having served on the board with Humboldt Transit Authority, the general manager and the staff there are very receptive. Of course, it's a numbers game, I'm not gonna pretend that we can, you know, do anything at any time. However, the input is valuable, and it's gonna be listened to. And I encourage, moving forward, the economic development conversation, and this conversation, I think really there's an opportunity to dovetail the two, because you're right, right? Let's celebrate Trinidad and encourage people to come here and make it for two bucks, right? I can't drive to my job for two bucks with my truck, that's another story. But it really is an opportunity to say, let's celebrate what we have here, and to bring those two together. Humboldt Transit Authority is very creative, very intelligent, and I think that there's some opportunities. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Excellent. Well, thanks for all the input, everyone, and thank you, Ms. Nielsen, for your presentation. We will continue to solicit feedback and pass it your way.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, our next item tonight is Community Emergency Response Team, update and presentation. And for that, I'm gonna turn it over to the team leader, Larry Goldberg.
Good evening, everybody, how are you? So as a little recap, I'd like to mention, just over a year ago, the council discussed and decided to form a Community Emergency Response Team, we call it SER. And last November, exactly one year ago, we did our first training. And now I can give you a report for our first year of operation. So we now have a fully vested team, next please. We did a training here last November, and everybody on our team, it was a three-day training. Everybody on the team received basic training in emergency response. And this includes first aid, firefighting, search and rescue, and our SER protocols, communications, and so forth. So it's a basic training to keep everybody safe in time of an emergency. So out of this training, next. Out of this training, we now have 20 trained SER members. Not everybody is actively participating, but we've been meeting monthly since January. So this is now our first year of operation, and you're looking at the team. Not everybody lives here in Trinidad, and some people live in West Haven, some people actually come from McKinleyville, but we have this team, and we want to grow it some more. So it's a starting point, next. So that's our swearing in, Mayor Kelly swore in the members in January. And we now have approximately 12 to 15 active members. We do have more trained people in the field, but at least 12 to 15 show up every month. And we've been having monthly meetings, as well as doing some public meetings, next. So our first deployment, we decided to actually do an effort to see what the deployment was like. And in February, we had that big windstorm. We had eight people show up for deployment. We split into three teams, and we canvassed West Haven, Patrick's Point Drive, and even sent a team up to Big Lagoon, and then down to Seadeck Drive. So we did a survey of damage and gave a damage report to the OES and to Mayor. So, you know, we didn't have any serious damage, but some trees fell, and there were power outages and so forth. But it was a good experience to get the team to deploy in relatively short order. People showed up with an hour's notice, and it worked out very well, next. But it's supposed to do it in the sequence, it didn't do the sequence. But anyhow, we did a refresher class in February. This was in Blue Lake, and we had a training for various first aid and emergency response techniques, so we did a little refresher, and that turned out very well, next. Yeah, these are supposed to be in sequence, but they're not, they're not changing like they're supposed to. In any case, in April, the OES put on what's called a full-scale disaster event. You can't see all the individual pictures, they were supposed to load one at a time. But the point is, they did a simulation at the Blue Lake Rancheria of an active shooter. They had moulage, which is to dress people up like they were actually injured. And we had injured people, we had an active shooter, Sheriff's Department, Highway Patrol, Blue Lake Police, Blue Lake Rancheria Police, ambulances, and other first aid responders were all on site to actually do a test run of communications and other activities. And there, as you can see, there was a number of injured people, and we all were in a full-scale, realistic simulation. We are looking at doing something like this here in Trinidad. We would like to do a simulation at some point of some kind of emergency, and see what kind of deployment we'd get, and what kind of response we have. So we are training for this type of event, next. So we also did community training. We've put on a number of community workshops, I'm sorry the slides aren't building the way they're supposed to, but we did a CPR and Stop the Bleed class back in, I think this was October, so a little over a month ago. We just completed an animal first aid class last, this month, this was about a week or so ago, where we trained people in how to administer first aid to animals. And we showed people how to have go bags and animal preparation for disaster. And this was very popular, and it was well-attended, so that went well, but. And we have an emergency trailer, the pictures don't fully demonstrate it, but we received the trailer from the McKinleyville SER team. This was purchased under a grant from the Listos, and this trailer is worth about $20,000. It has, it's fully equipped, well, it's equipped with basic supplies. With the budget validated, we are going to outfit it with additional equipment. We're gonna buy a new generator, we're gonna add a couple of other devices, and we want a much more robust first aid capability. Our attitude is, we will be on our own for some period of time in a major event. If we have the kind of mega-thrust earthquake and tsunami that we're anticipating, Trinidad's gonna become an island. We're gonna be on our own for at least a couple days, more likely several weeks. So we want to have the trailer outfitted, it will be deployed here in Trinidad. We're setting up a base station with walkie-talkies and ham radio, so we can communicate with the rest of the community if all other communications are down. And we are training with OES and with other SER teams to be able to talk to each other from here. We are assuming that we're gonna lose cell service, we're gonna lose most communications, telephones, so forth. And we will have, we have four ham radio operators on our team, and we are training more. So we'll be prepared to do communications within the area. We have to buy radios and a base station for the trailer, but this is gonna be command post. So we are getting set up for the kind of emergencies that we anticipate here, next. We're also doing ongoing training with other SER teams and partner agencies. For example, the NOAA had a training in reporting the weather, and what kinds of weather events could happen here, which might include the major storms that we have, plus potential tornadoes. We could have a tornado at some point in the future, or a major wind event. We've had them several times in the past, and so they are, we are now trained in how to report this to NOAA, so they can gather information. We've also attended some trainings in setting up Red Cross Shelter, and in doing other kinds of activities that we might have here. So we want all of our members to be as well-trained as possible. So we've changed our meeting schedule. We've been meeting monthly with a regular meeting, we are gonna start meeting every other month. And in the odd months, we're gonna do training. And we want our people trained in, a little bit more deeply trained in communications, more advanced first aid, more advanced search and rescue, and some more. more advanced first aid, more advanced search and rescue, and some more advanced firefighting and other activities, including possibly wildland first aid. So if we were involved with search and rescue in some of the woods around here, there might be some activities that we would help with. We're in touch with the local fire departments, volunteer fire departments, and we want to be able to assist them. We're trying to talk right now with CAL FIRE, but also with West Haven and Trinidad volunteer fire departments to see how we can do, assist them as well in some of their activities. So we're looking at mutual response, and there's ways that we can help. Everyone on our team is volunteer. Everyone has given a lot of time and effort to to the training. And we have now formed a number of working groups. These working groups each specialize on certain areas. So we have a Trinidad, I mean, a trailer working group, working on outfitting the trailer. Mayor Kelly is running our fundraising working group, and she wanted me to tell you that there's a project they're working on, which is to, this team will be collecting new gently-used shoes from December 1st through February 1st as a fundraising effort to complement the funding the city has offered. Funds will be helped, the team cover costs for personal gear and for team equipment for the trailer. SER is partnering with Funds to Orgs, which collect the shoes and distribute them to micro entrepreneurs in developing countries for resale. So it's win-win-win. Shoes stay out of the landfill, SER gets a check for the gear, and small enterprises are available in developing countries. The call to action for now is just to hang out, hang out to your shoes. So we want to have people donate gently-used shoes for this effort and will be used to raise some money. So and there's gonna be a donation station probably here at Town Hall, and there will be some collection days, and Mayor Kelly will probably say more about that. So I want to point out that we appreciate your allocating the budget for us. We're going to fill out the trailer. We also want to develop for each of our team members sufficient equipment to be able to respond and be ready for almost any kind of emergency that we may have here. So we do want trauma kits. We're going to also have more advanced life-saving activity stuff because we think in time we may be requested to reply or to respond to a certain disaster. So we want to be ready for that. I think that's the end of it. Is there anything more? Yeah, that's us. So we're on to our second year. We will be meeting here, we meet on the fourth Monday of every other month, starting in January. In the months of February and April and so forth, we'll be doing training. And we're also gonna put on additional public workshops where we want to do some more in-depth training for the public. We want everyone in this community to have a go bag. We want everyone in this community to have basic first aid. And we are concerned about how many rentals there are here, and we want to see in every rental, rental in this area, whether VRBO, Airbnb, motel, what have you, that there be instructions on what to do in cases of emergency. Because evacuation from this community is gonna be difficult. We've been trained in traffic and crowd control, but there will be some issues we foresee in the future, especially in the case of wildfire. If there was a wildfire here, we think that there could be some bottlenecks, and we want everyone to be aware of what to do and where to go. We will be talking with McKinleyville and other teams about having evacuation centers. And we will like to have a plan that dovetails with the city's emergency plan on where people should go in time of an emergency. And everyone should get trained, it's not a matter of if, it's only a matter of when. And we want to be ready for whatever we encounter. Any questions at this time?
Questions from the council?
Yes, you mentioned Mondays, what time?
Oh, it's in the evening, six, actually, yeah, 6:30 till 8 o'clock. And that's every other month, and those are, we consider our general meetings. At the general meetings, the working groups report back. We give updates on other training and other things going on. And we we have a chance to socialize a little bit, and, and, you know, we want to work as a team. We're trying to get everyone to really get meshed as a team. We want to get everyone to work together, and they have to get to know each other and work together. So these longer trainings on the opposite months will be out in the field or here, and they're gonna be three to four hours long. And this is where we do the specialized training like animal first aid or CPR or stop the bleed, things like that. And then the, those trainings are on Sundays. They're on the second Sunday of every other month, from noon till 4:00 PM here. And then sometimes we go out in the field.
And and these would be for people, for example, who haven't had any training at all?
Right. We're only going to be inviting the general public to a couple of these trainings. Several are are gonna be for SER team members countywide. So there are ten SER teams around the county, and every major, every city in the county has a SER team now. And Southern Humble, Incorporated areas as well are covered by OES. But we will be doing training specifically for SER trained members, and then the general public will be invited to those trainings that are suitable for the general public. And I expect there'll be two or three of those a year.
Other questions from the council for Larry? And I'm gonna ask if there are any questions from the public, the community regarding the community emergency response team?
I would mention that we do want to hit up the Civic Club and the Chamber of Commerce as well to get their buy-in. And I'd like them to be a little bit more actively involved, possibly.
Yeah, that would be great. Sorry, did you guys see someone with a hand raised? Oh, please, I couldn't see you because of the podium. I couldn't see you because of the podium, I apologize. Come on up if you have a question or comment, Victoria.
Think the general public should know. You know, it might be good to teach the McKinleyville members.
Oh, we teach that in the CPR class. The the general public needs to be prepared for staying camping out at home if need be, but also to have a go bag. We have a procedure that we talk about, and this is something everyone here should know. You may only have 10 minutes, and you really need to think, what would you need if you only had 10 minutes to pack? And I think a good example is look at what happened in North Carolina and Florida this last month with the hurricanes. Some of these people, you know, they never prepared for a hurricane in North Carolina. And for that matter, you know, we may not be ready for whatever may hit here. If you have a limited amount of time, you need to have a go bag to be ready to run. And every child, the children have to have a go bag, and your pets need to have a go bag. And they're not expensive to put together, it takes a little bit of time, but it's one of those things that you'll rest more comfortably knowing you have those basic things covered. But basic training in first aid and so forth is something that we offer in SER, and we'll be doing more of that in the future. We do have SER trainings coming up next year, and we'll publicize them when they're available. But they only kick place a couple of times a year, so you need to sign up well ahead of time.
Okay. Question, okay. I want to say thank you to Larry, who's been, I mean, as you can see by the the amount of training and community outreach, and we're just really fortunate to have Larry leading the team. And I I just, I really thank you for this.
Her thanks as well, her being the co-team leader, and we appreciate his efforts as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Larry. Thanks for the presentation. All right, our next item then is our, is actually was from the consent agenda. We agreed that this would be item number three. This is the Ocean Protection Council funding opportunity to implement coastal resilience plan priority projects on Edwards and Axle Lindgren Memorial Trail. I want to turn it over to staff, but I also wanted to say about this item that one of the reasons this was in consent is because it's kind of a plan for a plan. So staff may have kind of limited answers to questions because what we were actually doing is saying, we want to get a report next month on what some of the priority projects could be if we were to apply for a grant. So with that preface, I don't know if Angela or Eli, or do we want to just take questions if you want to do a little?
Yeah, Angela, did you want to just briefly?
Sure.
Yeah, maybe just an overview, and then we'll see if there are any questions.
Hello, hear me?
Yes.
So the city, we came upon a grant opportunity through the Ocean Protection Council, and it would help us implement the coastal resilience plan priority projects that we actually identified. I mean, not all of them, but a few, that we identified in our most recently drafted grant, which resulted in the coastal resilience action plan. Right now, again, we're, we're still trying to explore our options as to what best track to take with this grant. We have two options, track one, it's specifically like a planning project. And then that, and at first, I'm accepting proposals for that is December 20th, and it's a non-competitive quarterly rolling base that you can submit the application. So we're hoping to have something for the council to review if we're given guidance to pursue this by the December meeting. And if, I don't know, with more questions or when we have further time, we still have more opportunities to go for a grant. There is a track two, which is actually for implementation, so a construction project. We don't know if we're at that stage yet, but we're exploring that. And they're actually not accepting grant proposals just yet for that. Instead, it's just a letter of interest at this time, and that is also due on December 4th. If they, if we submit the letter of interest, it will then trigger Ocean Protection Council to review that letter of interest and see if they think do have a priority project. And if we do, then they will allow us to apply for a grant proposal with that. And again, that's if we meet the criteria. And again, we don't even know if we're ready for a project like that just yet. But we want to ensure that we explore that option first before passing this opportunity. The grants range from $200,000 to $10 million. So if we could get a considerable grant to finish one of our projects, that would be a great opportunity for the city. And again, this is also just to help us address like the bluff instability on Edward Street. So again, it's just planning for the future.
All right, any questions from the council on this project? Or this proposal for a project? Any questions from the public? Mr. Kenny?
A quick question about the bluff instability on Edward Street. Are you talking about the area around the old Memorial Lighthouse part, or where exactly?
I think that would be something that we really address while we're doing the studies. So I don't want to say the entire left side of the town to talk for engineers.
But but certainly that that's the main instigator is that area because we're concerned if it works its way towards Edwards, we want to be prepared.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Ms. Hossar Karmason, I see your hand raised, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I'm having sound issues. I heard the HCOG presentation really well. I'm hearing the city council okay, but I'm not hearing from the podium well. And I could not hear the projects that you were considering possibly. If you could repeat those briefly, I would really appreciate it. And just louder, and I don't know if the sound can be turned up in the room or not.
We're gonna, we're gonna try, thank you, and Angela's gonna do a quick recap. Louder in the room, is it louder on?
Can you hear me?
That's a little better.
Okay, so the projects are Edward Street, I'm sorry, so Edward Street specifically with the bluff and the Memorial Trail, and Axle Lindgren Memorial Trail. It's one of the projects that we believe could be potentially ready for construction. But again, we're exploring that still, so that is something that is probably to discuss.
Edward Street and Axle Lindgren Memorial Trail construction, I didn't hear anything else.
That's those are the projects.
Those two. And what would the project be on Edward Street?
It would just be looking at bluff instability and doing further studies that were identified in the most.
Okay, and that's on Rancheria land?
No, this is by where the old lighthouse was. So basically, we're Trinity meets Edwards.
Okay.
Generally that area.
Okay, so all part of the entrance to Axle Lindgren Memorial, not the bluff erosion at the harbor?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
All right, apologies for the audio. Other questions, comments? From the public? All right, then I, well, thank you very much, Angela, and I'll bring it back to the council. Since we pulled this from consent, I do think at this point then we would need to vote on what's in the in the packet, which is to go ahead and instruct staff to develop proposals. So if anyone wants to make that motion? Sorry?
I actually have one other thing to add. So council, council did direct staff to apply for a grant through the Office of Funding and Research back in, I believe, May. And unfortunately, and it was for Edward Street and looking at the bluff. However, unfortunately, the state no longer have that funding available. So I just want to make note that this is also going to kind of fulfill that other part that we were trying to apply for last time.
Hey. I I apologize, Mayor Kelly, I have one more very brief question.
Okay, and then I have another, yeah, another comment from the public.
But the, the entrance to the old Memorial Lighthouse is both owned by, part of it is owned by the Civic Club and part of it by the city, isn't that correct?
Yes.
So it would be a joint project with the Civic Club and the city and TAS?
I think it depends on what the project is. And, right, Eli, I mean, right now, we're formulating sort of what are some of the potential projects? And there's some slumping there. I think, I think the Axle Lindgren Memorial Trail, if I understand correctly, was one of the primary projects we were looking at putting forward.
Right, and in addition to that, as far as the bluff erosion, we're talking mostly about what would be west, for the most part, west of the Civic Club site. So it's it's eroded considerably, and and that's the area. And then it's up to the engineers, but that's the focus of the area.
I mean, I see this as being kind of a plan for a plan. Like, this is the part of the phase where we're saying, let's instruct staff to go and make some recommendations on some potential projects that then we can all review. And that's why we're having a little trouble answering some of the questions because it's so preliminary, it's, you know.
Right, and I just want to, we're supportive of whatever the project is because we we agree with the slope destabilizing. However, I just wanted to make everyone aware, it's, there was a little bit of communication needed between the landowners there.
Yes, we, yeah, absolutely agreed. And one of the things that would happen if the council moves to continue this work is that in the next meeting in December, we'll talk about, we'll get input, and we'll talk about what the projects are, and we'll talk about sort of what are the phases of implementation and how much community input can be given, including obviously tribal input.
Right, and one last point, there is an old appeal at the Coastal Commission on the entrance to the Axle Lindgren Memorial Trail that would also come into play with any coastal development permits.
Okay. Okay, good to know, and we, staff is looking at me and we're looking back, so we will look into that. I, you know, I apologize that we don't have a lot of detail on this. It's, you know, we're, we're still in the, it's still in the formation stages. So Bryce, I think you had your hand up. Do you want to come to the podium so that folks on Zoom can hear you if you don't mind? Um, Bryce, I think you had your hand up. Do you want to come to the podium uh so that folks on Zoom can hear you if you don't mind?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I don't have any problem with um exploring civilization issues for Edwards Avenue Street. It's obviously one of the main thoroughfares in town. And we wouldn't want it to uh issue of it could be used. But the other project, the Axel Lindgren Trail repairs is more, there's been a lot of engineering work done on that already. My understanding is the, yeah, again, really wants to move forward with implementing that plan. That was discussed here in October, but there was certainly no consensus about whether this was a good project for the city. And, you know, from my point of view, the trail can be put back in service with a very small amount pick and shovel work for the short term. And then when that property gets back into tribal hands, that whatever tribe that is could decide what the long-term needs are and handle the paperwork and the whole process for, for making that happen. The EROC tribe designed and built that trail in 1997. I haven't heard them weigh in on this issue at all. It's, it's been the TAS um exclusively from what I can tell. You know, I think that a full-on wooden or metal staircase, like they're talking about, um, is not consistent with the traditional nature of the original trail, which was just a dirt path completely unimproved by any kind of technology or equipment or, you know, hill steps or anything. So there seems to be kind of a disconnect between the idea that well, it's super important that we have the exact historical alignment going on here. But it's okay if we use all these other non-traditional materials. Essentially, you kind of make in a grand staircase type of project, which be great for the engineers. But I don't think we should be in the business of just picking the project that gets the best, you know, greatest amount of work for any engineering firm. We come right into that problem with the Van Wijk Trail when the big grandiose plans were put forth. A lot of money and time and effort went into it. And then when people realized what it was really all about, you know, pull the plug on the whole thing and just walked away from it. So I think the potential for that kind of thing exists um with the trail also. And then the amount of time that staff would be putting into a project like this just seems much more appropriate for the tribal agency to take care of that with their, their resources and
Thank you.
and the funding they can get. So I think that we should, you know, with new council members coming on board, if they want a smooth transition, the views of the new people should be considered also.
Yes.
And the trail aspect should be tabled until we get the new council installed. And I suppose we're getting a new city manager at some point.
Yes, we talked about that earlier, uh, January.
Okay.
Yeah, January, we, yes, yes. Uh, but uh we, we, we're not introducing that person just yet because we want to get all the everything in order.
Right. So I think the uh trail rebuilt project should be tabled temporarily, pending seating of the new council and the city manager.
All right, thank you for your.
Since it is a rolling funding type of project, it wouldn't, wouldn't eliminate that possibility.
Yeah.
I think we need to take a step back and slow things down a little for that aspect of it.
Thank you, Bryce. Thank you for your comment. Other uh public comments on this uh grant application before I bring it back to the council? I don't see any. Um, did you have something, Chuck? I, I would just say, I, I guess I don't see applying for this grant as an approval of any project at this stage. So I don't know if I'm confused, maybe Eli, maybe you can help it. My understanding is what we're saying as a council is we would like to have staff go and work on some potential project plans. So for example, for Axel Lindgren, it's not necessarily that we're saying today, we want to uh implement a certain trail uh model. We could, for example, be asking for funding just to do a short-term fix of Axel Lindgren, right? Um, or we could be doing the long term, but we don't know yet because we don't have that. We don't have that project planned uh proposal yet. So this is a my understanding is we're saying tonight, we're going to move ahead to get the proposals and then submit those for funding. Am I missing something?
You know, Angela can help. And I mean, basically what the, she was saying is that we would, at this stage, uh be submitting these two concepts and then they would tell us if something is feasible for funding.
Okay.
And, and if they say that, yes, you know, this project sounds good, and why don't you go ahead and submit that, then we would. So, so this is like the first stage.
Okay, Angela, that's correct. Helpful. So, so the concept that we.
That's correct. Pardon? Okay.
Maybe this one's gonna be a fun topic.
For the track two, yes, which would be the implementation project.
And, and that wouldn't be until the beginning of the year.
Yeah, and so they're not even accepting grant proposals. It's just a letter of interest.
Yeah.
So, and again, we don't even know if we're ready for implementation of that project.
Right. Uh, Ms. Hossar Karmason has a comment as well.
Thank you, Mayor Kelly. Um, I'm a little confused now because it's my understanding that there is a plan to, uh, that has been designed through GHD. Um, and Tri Ancestral Society received a grant and that funding was uh used to design the trail that Bryce alluded to. And so if there is a design and that has been approved by TAS and the city, what would the grant actually be doing? Would it be doing the um the feasibility and the environmental or um with, you know, I don't know what percent complete those design uh drawings are, but it, if it's feasibility and environmental, to move forward with the trail project with this conceptual design, that would make sense.
Let me answer that. So there's still a lot more that needs to be done for that project. Um, so that's actually what we're trying to determine with this is if we're even at that stage where we are eligible for that fact two. The Axel Lindgren Memorial Trail project.
I'm sorry, your voice drifts off and I can't hear you.
So I was just saying that we're trying to determine if we're even at that point where they would fund um where we're at with that project, because there's still a lot more planning phases of that that need to be done. There's a lot more studies according to their technical memo.
Do you know what percent complete the plans are?
No.
Okay.
I, you know, it's, it actually is considered a conceptual plan. So uh the plans that are included in the packet are as far as they've gotten so far. So then they would take that concept and they would design it. So right now, it's just from the concepts in the concept stage.
Thank, thank you, Eli. Thank you very much.
So Angela, if we applied for this in December, when would the funding, when, do you know when the grants would be allocated? Did they give a, a timeline?
Correct. I have to look. Um, just because there's quite.
It's probably next year sometime.
It's sometime next year. And then two for the track two, which is the implementation project. Um, that is so for track one for the planning projects, it's non-competitive rolling basis. Track two, there's less funding for that, so it will be competitive. So we do need to consider that.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna bring it back to the council because I think we need to make a decision on this and, and move on. So how are we, um, how are we thinking about this, right?
Can we move forward, make a motion to approve and direct staff based off of the Ocean Protection Council funding opportunity to implement coastal resilience plan priority projects on Edwards and Axel Lindgren Memorial Trail.
Right?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so I think we all agree that we would like to move ahead and, and see what kind of funding, kind of funding we can get with projects on bluff stability, Edwards and the Axel Lindgren Memorial Trail.
So, uh, may I?
Yes.
So in doing that, that doesn't um negate what Bryce was saying about wanting the, the new uh city councillors to come aboard. Because this is a plan for a plan, not implementation.
I think we are saying we are willing to go forward with the conceptual uh Axel Lindgren Memorial Trail design that's been put forward uh by um the tri-management team and the city council has reviewed it. And so I think we're saying, yes, let's float that and see if we can get funding for that. But with, in the absence of engineering and so forth, I don't know that we know it's actually gonna look like in the end. We don't have, as, as Angela said, it's just partially completed.
And there's always multiple steps involved uh between, you know, this step and, and being shovel-ready. There's lots of, lots of places for public input, for city input. Uh, so this, yeah, this is
Yeah, I don't.
This is a plan to think about the possibility of a plan.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna get done.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot between here and the shovel.
Yeah. But that helps. All right, um, I'm gonna move us along then to uh the discussion presentation regarding law enforcement. Um, and this is a JPA contract concept, and I'm gonna turn this over to Eli. And we're gonna talk about law enforcement.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I was looking over to see if E-RAC is on there, but I don't see him on there. Uh, so E-RAC is from our insurance company, which is a joint powers authority. Uh, so as I said in my staff report, uh, I think I'll read that because it gives you a good general idea. Uh, so the current law enforcement contractor we have with the sheriff's office is also supplemented by Pacific Coast Security. Uh, the deputy sheriffs patrol the city and respond to calls. And Pacific Coast Security is in the city in the evenings, observing traffic and communicating with the community, including the businesses. Uh, the arrangement with the sheriff's office and PCS seems to provide adequate coverage for the city. Uh, so this has been in place for a little while. Originally, when I started uh five and a half years ago, we did have a dedicated uh officer uh in the city, and that went on for at least two or three years. Uh, so sometime during COVID, I'm guessing right around 2022, uh, the sheriff was unable to provide that dedicated officer that would be here for 40 hours. Uh, we also, at one point, were sharing another officer with Blue Lake. Initially, they had to, because they're a larger city of about 1,200 people, so they're four times our population. They originally had two officers and felt like they only needed one or at least wanted to share the other one. So, uh, so for some time, we had between 40 hours and 60 hours of uh officers that were present in the city rather than just patrolling through the city, uh roughly three times a day is, is what we uh are normally told by the uh sheriff's office. And then PCS, like I said, appears in the evenings. Uh, so SERA, the liability insurance pool, uh, six of the seven cities in Humboldt County, all except Riodale, are part of SERA. And altogether, there's about 50 cities. And they, they pool their uh resources and whenever something happens, like a shooting in the city or whatever, uh, all the cities technically end up paying for it, you know? Uh, so as a result, when you try to have the indemnity language uh in the sheriff's contract, SERA got concerned because they were shifting the risk from the county to the city. Uh, so basically, SERA, our insurance JPA, is covering any indemnity that uh would occur if the sheriff, the deputy sheriffs, if something happens where they're being sued for their actions. So previously, it was the county and now it's shifted to the city. And then what's attached to my uh report was uh the three pages that were prepared by E-RAC from SERA, uh where he was basically explaining how that has come about and the impact of it. So look at the sheriff's contract with Trinidad is for five years and the sheriff has not indicated that there would be a significant increase in cost to the city. In the report that E-RAC prepared, he originally prepared it for Blue Lake. Uh, at the end of October, they made this same presentation just to sort of get some feedback from the councils and also from the communities. So Blue Lake has a one-year contract with the sheriff. And that's why in that report, E-RAC said it was a one-year contract. And also, they indicated to Blue Lake that there could be a significant increase in costs to them. They're already paying uh considerably more than we are, uh, about triple what we're paying. Again, they're four times our size. So over time, residents in our city during this five and a half years that I've been here and even before have expressed an interest recently, I'd say in the last few years, when we shifted over to patrols, that they liked having a dedicated officer assigned to the city as the sheriff's office at one time was able to provide. But now, uh, because they have to cover 4,000 square miles is the size of our county and we're one square. So, so, uh, so, so, so as a result, it, it's difficult for them to give us a dedicated officer. So in the past two months, staff has had a couple meetings with the Ferndale Police Department, uh, the city of Blue Lake and SERA, our insurer, to discuss potential options for consideration as to what other cities have done uh when they try to contract for services either with a joint city or to form a uh JPA. So we want to discuss the potential option with the city council and the community to ascertain if there is sufficient interest to further pursue this auction. Uh, the concept is that the three smallest cities in the county, meaning Ferndale, Blue Lake and Trinidad, would uh possibly form a joint powers authority, which would be like a metropolitan police. Or they, we could contract directly, meaning Blue Lake and Trinidad with Ferndale. Uh, Ferndale has a police department. They've had it since the late 1800s. And uh they have uh five police officers and uh they have a chief and they also have uh uh about five uh reserve officers that are available for them. They basically are saying that uh they could supply officers to serve Blue Lake and Trinidad. They're also adding at least one more officer that could serve in this capacity. Those three officers would be located in the Blue Lake, Trinidad, possibly Arcata region. So they wouldn't live close by. They wouldn't be living in Ferndale. And uh one would be a sergeant and two would be patrol officers. One would be dedicated to Blue Lake. One would be dedicated to Trinidad. So also a police car um and uniforms can be purchased with the SERA flexible spending funds. So we have enough money in the SERA flexible spending funds that are dedicated to Trinidad. It can be utilized to purchase a car, a, a new uh police car, which would be about 55,000. And then also to purchase a couple uniforms that would indicate Trinidad. And then the car could be patrolling in the city of Trinidad. So probably Humboldt Police Department would provide the dispatch for the three cities. Mutual aid, of course, can be provided by all the local agencies, including the sheriff's office from McKinleyville, CHP, Arcata, as well as Ferndale. So those can all provide mutual. CHP, Arcata, as well as Ferndale. So those can all provide mutual aid. The cost of providing these services through the cities would be much greater, is the wording that I used, than the current services provided to the city. We're currently spending under a thousand, uh, under a hundred thousand rather, currently. And with this concept, it could be in excess of two hundred. It would provide us more service, but uh, it would be more of a cost. So ultimately, the council can direct staff, before we spend too much time in this path, uh, number one, to further pursue this option with both Ferndale and Blue Lake and CERA. Or number two, to wait until probably Ferndale and Blue Lake move forward with that, if we don't join them. And, and then see how it's working, and then reconsider if we want to do the same thing for our city. So those are two potential paths that we could pursue. But certainly, having options is always better than not having options.
Yep.
And, and, and eventually, uh, you know, I'm calling this sort of like a quasi-police department. Uh, we've been there, we've had a police department, we're only a city of three hundred people. It's quite costly to have your own police department, because then you have to pay for a chief. In this concept here, we're sharing a police chief with Ferndale and Blue Lake, so it cuts, cuts a lot of things open.
Right, interesting, yeah, thank you, interesting proposal. Uh, I'll start with the council. Any questions for Eli? All right, you must have been really clear, I understood that you're proposing. So, let's go to the community for comments or questions about this proposed uh, potential JPA. WA.
First question is, when does the current agreement with the uh, county run out?
Uh, it's a five-year contract, so it would run out in twenty twenty-nine, I believe. And, and uh, we, we can leave and the county could leave on a one-month notice.
I want to see the JPA model that CERA identified and look at what we have soon.
Yeah, yeah, there, there, uh, I, I think it was mentioned in his report, the three pages. Uh, but yeah, there, there are a couple that uh, they have looked at, and they actually did send a model contract that uh, could be utilized, uh, which would be the contract directly with Ferndale and with uh, Blue Lake and Trinidad, if we did that. So it could be uh, one version. The JPA uh, version would be later on, they would initially start with the contract and then develop into a JPA.
Yeah, what I was referring to was an agreement that would create a JPA.
Yeah.
What kind of agreement would be entering, be entering into with Blue Lake and Ferndale?
Okay.
To me, that's important.
Sure.
See what that looks like. And then, uh, can you tell us exactly how much the member cities would have to pay more under the, under the new?
Yeah, the uh, the concept that when we had our meeting, and I had Dave join me, because when Gabe and I were talking, because I went to the initial meeting, and then when we were talking, he had really excellent questions he was asking. And I says, okay, why don't you come and join me, because I will be retiring again, where it will be having a new city manager, and then Dave could help function sort of like in that transition stage. Uh, but basically, at that meeting, uh, Ferndale determined that it would cost about three hundred and eighty thousand to provide that service to both Blue Lake and Trinidad. Uh, I made it clear, at least in my viewpoint at the meeting, that uh, Trinidad is three hundred thousand people, uh, is three, uh, three hundred people rather, and then uh, Blue Lake is twelve hundred people. So therefore, I would take the thirty-eight hundred and divide it possibly two-thirds and one-third. That was my suggestion. So basically, thinking that Trinidad would pay one-third, and uh, Blue Lake would pay two-thirds. But uh, in talking with Gabe and also looking over some of these things, uh, you know, there wouldn't be the cost of maintaining the, the lease car, the cost of gas. Uh, so there's additional costs, and that's why we, I, you know, maybe around two hundred.
Yeah, what I was talking about was that um, if, under the new, first of all, let me back up for a second. So our contract we have now isn't, is until twenty twenty-nine.
Right.
And we don't indemnify the sheriffs under that contract, correct? They indemnify us.
Our, our insurance indemnifies the county and sheriff. The contract was just signed this year, and, and that's, that's part of why CERA got concerned and says, hey, we, we should look at some other models.
Okay, so the contract that runs until twenty twenty-nine, we, we are, we are, we're identifying the county.
Right.
So what, what I was talking about was, there's a reference in his report that um, this will cost all the member cities more.
Yeah, what, what he was saying is basically the fifty cities that are part of the uh, JPA that is CERA, which this would be a separate JPA that's just the three cities. But the insurance that we have now that's covering the sheriff's uh, contract, all fifteen cities, if, if there is, let's say, a million dollar lawsuit, are gonna basically be paying for that million dollar lawsuit.
Well, yeah, he mentioned they'd also have to pay through the fees that they, every member has to, to chip in.
Right, yeah, so, so each year, uh, we pay X amount of dollars, so that could increase.
They know how much, by how much though?
It, no, each year, actually, every year, we, we have uh, the city of Trinidad, along with all the other fifty cities, are on the board. So we have a board representative, which is usually either myself or Gabe, so it's a city manager and a city clerk. So we'll be meeting again uh, December twelfth, and uh, uh, and they also meet in May. And uh, at that, at those points, once a year, they go over, they go over all of the uh, costs, and then they tell us roughly what the liability costs are changing from year to year.
And now, I worry that we're gonna confuse folks about the difference. You're talking about the CERA, our insurance company, and the members that are part of CERA. And so let's kind of separate that discussion from what we're talking about. Right, because a potential, unless I'm missing something.
There's two JPAs.
Yeah, because I think people are gonna start getting confused about, uh, yeah, the JPA is about law enforcement coverage, a kind of a shared services model between three cities, and the decision before the council tonight, and for, up for discussion is, do we pursue this, or do we not? Is it more of a wait and see, how it goes with the other towns? Or does Trinidad wanna say, hmm, we think we wanna pursue this, and we need to find out more, uh, maybe to do that, right? But, but the, yeah, CERA is not the, I don't wanna get too deep into that, I guess, if we can help it.
I don't think we should get in a big hurry to um, change what we're doing now with the sheriffs.
Okay.
Principally because of the amount of extra costs it's gonna, it's gonna cost. And I'm wondering if, has the county been asked, you know, would they reconsider?
Liability.
If, if they lose Blue Lake and Trinidad because of this new language that they have in their agreement, is it, you know, is it worth it to them?
Good question. We, we've talked to them about it, about the liability aspect on at least one or two occasions, and they haven't been willing to, to, to budge. I don't know how much they care if Blue Lake and Trinidad opt out, but it's worth, you're, you're right that it could be a negotiating point, Bryce. I do wanna kind of get to, as a, because I recognize that Bryce will most likely be a council member soon, and we will be able to go back and forth with this kind of dialogue. I do have to invoke the Brown Act a bit here, that, that we do have members of the community. At this point, you're a member of the community, and you need to, uh, if you can kind of state your opinions on the direction, you can ask. We can have some back and forth, but, but not a tremendous amount. So I'm, I'm just trying to kind of focus this in on, you know, what would you suggest we do, based on what you know today, and get some other input from members of the community.
Trying to get as much information as I could about.
Yes, I understand. I understand.
My recommendation, I guess, would be, if I was you, if I was, if I was in your shoes, then I, I wouldn't love to change.
Anything at this time? Okay, that's what I was curious about, is, yeah, but based on what you know, because you, you, from the packet, you probably know about as much as we do at this point, and so.
I read it very carefully.
Yes, yes, I see that, thank you. All right, other uh, public comments on this proposal as it stands? All right, I'm gonna bring it back to the council. My comments or questions on where you think we should go with this?
I appreciate the option, right? It's always uh, important to explore options. If I remember correctly, the, the community survey that we did, I think in the summer,
Yeah.
uh, showed sort of an improvement in folks' feeling of safety and, and fewer concerns. I'm also, again, anecdotal, I haven't done an exhaustive uh, look at this, but the, the reports that we get from, from uh, Lieutenant McCall every month, doesn't seem to be indicating that we're experiencing a surge in, in safety concerns. Therefore, spending a considerable amount of money in addition to what we're currently doing doesn't really seem to connect. Uh, uh, again, I, I like the option, but it doesn't seem to be like this is the time to, to explore expending quite a bit more resources, when in essence, our, our safety, our feelings of safety seem to be fairly consistently low, I, I mean, high. Uh, so that's just my take, so.
Uh, I have a question about that, though. If I understood you, the indemnification changes the picture, the, because uh, if, if we're bearing the burden, if there is a problem across all the towns that are part of this CERA.
CERA.
CERA. Uh, we could suddenly get it. It isn't like we're gonna continue just to pay our hundred thousand and, and get the, the, the level of safety we've, we could suddenly be thrown into million dollar.
Okay, it wouldn't be uh, that significant, because it is split amongst the, the poll, you know? But, but still, I mean, technically, there could be a large lawsuit against the city. The time that I've been on the board, they've only dropped one city in the state. And, and that's because, you know, the, too many flames and, and the way they were running things. Uh, they have a lot of problems in that one particular city. But uh, but certainly, that's something that they take into consideration, and historically, Trinidad has been very low. Uh, we, uh, you know, haven't had too many issues that have been considered, uh, you know, hardly any during the five and a half years I've been here. Uh, versus even like Arcata or Eureka, they, they've had a few issues that have to be addressed, because they do go into a closed session where we talk about lawsuits. And uh, and unfortunately, Trinidad hasn't been one, but uh, but yeah, I mean uh, to me, it, it's, it seems logical that the county and the sheriff would be responsible for the liability, because they're the ones that are training the deputies, and, and they're the ones who are uh, managing the deputies. You know, if, if, if we as a city, you know, had our chief who was basically, uh, you know, telling the uh, officers what to do and, and making sure that they had the proper training, then I'd say the liability should be on us. So, in a way, it doesn't seem proper that they would shift that liability, and that's what CERA is saying, but they have already, yeah.
Can we, okay, if you can be, go ahead.
No.
If I just, I, I think we're, we're probably gonna come to a conclusion that you may be happy with, with.
I think we might agree, because in the, in the CERA report, it does note that the main liability would be for defense costs. If a county officer shoots and kills somebody in, in the city of Trinidad, that's on them, but we would have to defend them in court, and maybe spend some money um, arguing that because they're the one who actually shot the person, that's on them, not us. They, they may agree to that, so it's not a huge exposure to us, but
Yeah, that's my.
Defense cost. To defend somebody, but then if they're found liable, they have to pay. That's how that works.
Um, other councillors, are there comments or?
I think it's, I think one of the things, I, I've heard a lot of people say it, would like to have police car, uh, police officer in the city, being able to be helping out if necessary, so. I, I would like to see this, something to get out to the community, that there is such a thing, that this is out there, so people can, can give us some feedback, so I, I think it'd be nice to continue saying that we do have these options, and uh, make sure the community knows about it, because it's one of those things that a lot of people said there's certain, there are some issues in Trinidad, they'd like to make sure to take care of. So I might not just make sure that this does get out, I think the idea of postponement, watch, and let's see what happens with Blue Lake and Ferndale, and let people know that this is out here, would maybe have. Those continue to be out there, just not, that we're not actually pursuing it this time.
So I, I'm gonna, um, Ms. Hossler-Carmerson has her hands up, so I'm gonna make one brief comment, and then go back to public comments, and then we'll, we'll bring this to the council. Um, but I, I, yeah, I agree with you, uh, Jack and Steve. Um, I think, I, I don't know if what we have today is perfect, uh, but we have a pretty good system with Humboldt County Sheriff and, and PAC security. I do think that it's not perfect, though, because I still hear people having concerns, unlike Jack. I've heard since I got on the council that people want a uniform Trinidad Police Department back. And so I think we should hold on to this idea, you know, based on Bryce's feedback and, you know, all the questions he had. I'm sure that's representative of some of the questions that we wanna get answered and others in the community. So, you know, we don't have all the answers tonight, I don't feel. So, I think I'm in the camp of, maybe not wait and see until it's fully implemented by the other cities, like keep this one on the front burner and see, you know, how it's going, and then kind of opt in along the way. It, it is twice as much as we're spending today, so I'm, I'm cognizant of that as well, so. I think I'm in the wait-and-see a bit as well, so I think everybody's nodding. So, let me, um, Ms. Hossler-Carmerson, did you wanna weigh in on this one? I see you have your hand raised.
Yes, um, I wanted to hear Bryce's comments and could not hear his questions, comments. I can hear the council, but I can't hear the person at the podium, if those could be recapped really briefly.
You wanna try to do that, Bryce, or?
We'll have a safe harbor.
Yeah, 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 so he, so, so with the audio, so I'll tell you what, why don't we, we will, yes, so Gabe and, Gabe is going to send them to you. Jackie, he's gonna email them, email them or put them in comments. And then if you have anything else you wanna add, please just come back to us. I know we're gonna revisit this, by the sound of things, we'll be revisiting this topic.
Well, I think that, you know, naturally, I'm concerned about law enforcement for the rancheria as well. And um, being able to afford a contract with the county is something we're always trying to do, and the problem has been a shortage in um, available deputies, and having the, the capacity to, you know, dedicate a deputy to the rancheria. So tribes are also able to enter into JPAs, so I'm very interested in the concept. And I was just trying to hear Bryce's concerns. And um, we, you know, are continuing to explore uh, opportunities and, and options for, for the tribe as well. Thank you. I, I really feel like we need, if we're gonna have hybrid meetings, we really need to have a sound system that works. And for whatever reason, the podium is, is not, people are not pulling the microphone down, and there's, quality control is not there. Thank you.
Okay. And this has come up before, so we really need to work on that. Eli?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to comment to what Jackie said, since they are looking also uh, at the sheriff, that uh, you know, possibly down the road, the joint powers authority. the Joint Powers Authority could include the rancheria as well.
Yeah.
And that'll help cut down the cost for everybody. And it's nice that they're neighbors, so that, you know, between the two of us, we have a little extra protection.
Yeah, and maybe we can go through this, including some of Bryce's comments. We have a rancheria, a G to G with the rancheria.
Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday. And so maybe we can go into review this. Not necessarily, we may not have to be able to add anything, but if we could review it in person, it'll be helpful.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, back to the council. Is there a motion? Be made here?
I recommend or I make a motion that we table the entering of a JPA contract concept with as discussed.
All right, I'll second that. I think I would like to keep it on the front burner and look at it some more, but for now, I don't think we're ready to make a decision, so we'll defer the decision. Opposites in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We need a stretch break. Thank you, everyone. We've had some meaty, good discussion topics tonight. I actually, I don't want to take a break because I know there are people here who are excited to hear about the next topic. We got a lot of positive feedback. And so the next item is the discussion regarding Saunders Park Playground Concept. And I think, Councilor Tuttle, you're leading that discussion or?
Was a few different Trinidad families came to meetings and said that we don't really have a good playground space here in Trinidad. And I think, well, we have the, you know, the school next door, and they're telling me that it's closed during the summertime, it's closed during school hours, so. So basically, I came to the idea of perhaps changing, reorganizing Saunders Park and making it a family-friendly park that bring more families from out of town and also here. We, we intend to make a lot of money in tourism. I feel like this could actually bring more people here and increase perhaps our household revenue. That also just enhances the quality of our lives and children here in town to have a safe space to play here in summer. It would also increase the amount of traffic in the library, the museum, the great little walking trail and the community garden. Feel that more families knew about that, they'd use it more. So. Yeah.
And then also the slides are up there, if you want to walk through them or just refer to them in the packet. Do you have a preference, Jack?
Just, yeah. You know, today we're just kind of deciding, do we want to direct staff to work on that idea? It's not, we're working with Angela to figure out if this is even an idea that we can even do. So the next step would be, do we want direct staff to use our time to do it? Yes or no? And then from there, we're going to reach out to the Trinidad Coastal Land Trust and say, we now have the city council's backing, do you have now approve us to maybe reorganize your park? Because it really is their park. And we've had a brief discussion with them last February, and it sounded like they were interested, but they needed our approval to even bring it to their council.
All right, well, I know we got a lot of public comments. As I said, everything was positive. Let me open up to, you know, get some public feedback. And these are some of the concepts that you're seeing on the screen. If there's some thoughts or, you know, pros and cons you want to bring forward. I have a hand raised. It looks like Carrie, please go ahead.
Hi there, my name is Carrie Varela. I'm really excited to be coming in as a council member, hopefully in December. And I just wanted to, for my support for this agenda item and to, you know, transform the park into an area that would be great for kids. I am a mom and I've been raising my kids in Trinidad for the last five years. And, you know, the playground is a really big issue for moms. And I know, like, basically every mom that I know in the area would be really happy to have another space for our kids to play and to be outside and just enjoy this beautiful town of Trinidad. And I think it would do a lot for our community and for our children. So yeah, I'm a big fan of this project.
Great, thank you. And we look forward to meeting you.
Likewise, I look forward to being with you guys over the next few years.
Yeah, yeah, excellent. Other comments from the public? Bryce?
Since I commented around just about everything else, I would like to say thank Jack for the great work and you have a hundred percent of my support. In fact, it looks like so much fun, it almost makes people want to have some more kids, so I can text you.
Thanks, Bryce. Patty? Yes.
I'm Patty, Director of the Museum. And when the park was first closed in between 2000 and 2006, when everything started being built over there, it was Mayor Lee and Mayor Hay that both were supporting seeing the park because it had so many retired people. And there was a little pushback then, but we didn't have so many children and from, you know, being in the museum most every day, most of the parks have been used by transgenders. And they kind of dominate the scene there. And to have families and children instead would be awfully nice. The Bocce Ball Court was a great idea achieved many years ago, but it really is not utilized very much. And so if that's the biggest space, I suppose, that could be changed. Because of budget concerns early on, we don't have anything like water fountains or restrooms could be an issue with lots of kid use, but I think if if, I guess I'm just saying, from somebody who's over there quite a bit and sees every day what is occurring now, to have families and children there enjoying those parks would be really wonderful. But yeah, we never think electricity, the solar panel idea, that would work, but it would be great, no water restrooms would be the concerns. But the Bocce Ball Court would be great if it were being used more, but it really isn't. And so that was kind of the biggest space. And thank you, Jack, for mentioning that. I didn't know this was going on.
Thanks, Patty. Other comments, please?
This is my opinion, both at the start of pickleball.
Did you want, yeah. Yes, please. So we're also talking about the tennis court and pickleball improvements. Yeah.
I'm Dan Chandler, and I play tennis three times a week and have for many years here. So a couple of comments about the pickleball. The problem from tennis players playing with you is that there's a profusion of lines because there are a bunch of lines for pickleball and they don't, any of them line up with lines that are there for tennis, so. It is possible to make them compatible. At Larson, they've chosen the colors very wisely. And that's what we would ask of you is that put your time and replicate what Larson has done there so that we don't get confused by, and they don't get confused by the different lines. It's not easy to do a sort of line gradation, but that would be the main thing. But also, I had a couple of other pickleball considerations. I don't know how many you have heard pickleball. I say heard rather than play, because it's a very noisy sport. You know, they're hitting a hard ball with a hard bat and I think there might be some concerns from neighbors. I don't know for sure. There would definitely be concerns like in the summer when we had the Classical Music Festival. You wouldn't want pickleball players playing at the same time as the Classical Music Festival, because you would hear that very loudly. So that's one concern. I have no idea how you would address that. Another would be if there are going to be a lot more players here. For tennis, we pretty much know who the groups are and we coordinate so that we don't end up here and having to wait for an hour. Frustrating if you make a plan that by tennis that, and you arrive at ten, somebody else just got their ten, that you have to wait till or decide not to play. So if there's a lot more traffic here, it would be great if we could have some kind of a scheduling system. There are online scheduling systems that are available. It might be on the city website with a sign. You know, sign up how to do it. That would help a lot. And the other thing, someone, another tennis player just texted me and suggested that it might be possible, and I have no idea because I don't know how much grant it is. But you're trying, you want the families and kids at the park. And it might be possible to replace the Bocce Court in park with a pickleball court. So with, I think most studies have shown that if you have people who, some people might be less desirable, that if you have a lot of traffic of people who are more desirable and that sort of pushes out some of the less desirable people in public spaces. So having pickleball as well as the kids' playground might be a good idea for that area where the Bocce Court is at this point. Only really one more point. I think it was three years ago. This rant has been a long time coming. We tennis player said we would pay for a windscreen on the end and to the gate. And that never happens. I've never understood why not. During the spring, it gets very windy and in the afternoon is almost any time during the year, it's pretty windy. You know, when you're standing on the court and your balls are moving away from you, that's that's sort of my indication, it's time to go home. Because they turn too much in the air also. So we would still, we really like to have a windscreen up. The only possible objection I've heard is it blocks sight. You know, so you don't want things happening on the court if you can't see. And this would be very limited just to the front and first quarter. But if you've ever been to your Larson, and if you haven't, I recommend it, just in terms of pickleball too. You know, you can stand in the parking lot at Larson and see all the way down, it's a couple hundred yards past three courts and past, to the backboard there. So it's perfectly possible to have a windscreen that is effective as they do. But it's transparent enough so that it doesn't block, you know, your sheriff patrol or whatever, seeing what is happening. But I think that's pretty much it. I hope it happens soon because the crack in the court is progressing.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thanks, great suggestions. Eli wants to make a quick comment?
Yeah, yeah, there are really good suggestions. I appreciate that. I did want to note that there is what's called noise-reducing rackets. And we could just require those. So it's for pickleball, yeah. So in this way, you know, when you hit the ball on the ground, it's going to make some noise. But hitting and making the contact between the ball and the racket is the worst.
Yeah.
And if you have the noise-reducing racket, it'll be quieter.
That could definitely help. And then also the suggestion that there are tables, that to move the pickleball to Saunders Park if there was room. And so I think, you know, there's a limited amount of space, but I have a comment online. Lisa and Taylor LaFever have been asking to comment or had their hand raised, and then we'll go to the room. Lisa and Taylor, did you want to go ahead and make a comment?
Yeah, can you hear us?
Yes.
Hey, yeah, so we live here in Trinidad, down on Underwood, kind of past Jack, and we have two young children and are obviously in huge support of the project of the park going forward in Saunders Park. And we don't really attend that area at all with our kids. And so if it was repurposed, we think it would probably be a huge success for the community, which is obviously a a growing community. We have, I think, eight children on Underwood alone. And under 10, I would say. And so we would definitely use it and with the tourism going on, and I think a lot of families that are visiting would use the park and appreciate it. And I also was going to say that the pickleball court is going to be a great addition to the community. It's a huge, growing sport. It keeps people active and healthy and if you do decide to move it down by the Saunders Park, which the last commenter was suggesting, I just would hope that you guys could at least do the lines in the tennis court currently so that we could get that started ASAP. That's my comment.
All right, thank you. Thanks for the comment. And Victoria's at the podium?
I'd love to hear the enthusiasm on Saunders Park being used for children. I think it would really enlighten our whole community. I also have to say, I really like the Bocce Court being a pickleball. Because of course I live in a place where I can hear tennis players very much. But it might be a little disconcerting having, you know, some of the pickleball court for neighbors, not only be there, but like there. And actually, the rotation sounds like you could do something for them. If you want to have people, it sounds very lively and like a beautiful place. Twenty-five. And I just wanted to say something. We are really blessed to be here in Trinidad with so many wonderful people. So I should wonder. You know, I think we're going into times which may be defining. I think we have to be careful. God, who on earth is desirable? Who? We call undesirable. I think we just search out the soul from this one. Whatever, faith or non-faith, if you come from an ethical, Western cultural background and others who are original, different backgrounds. But I think it would be wise to have gratitude that we're here. But not everybody has the same opportunities. And it only really takes for most Americans, I believe, to be short of $400 to be broke, you know, and run into broke if they can't pay for those sort of months. So I think we should keep that in mind. And maybe in having this wonderful, lively Saunders Park with the children, they'll hope for it. Who knows? We might have a real transformation.
Yeah, yeah. Agreed. Thank you.
I think we should ask ourselves whether or not we're believers in a specific faith, whether Krishna, Moses, Jesus, Buddha, and other spiritual leaders, you know, would help. They had a vision. And maybe we should aspire to that a little bit because we are you know, very lucky to be here. You know, we have wonderful people down in St. John's. Wonderful people who are on the city council. Time of the mission and, you know, this is our good fortune. Sometimes we have to give a little bit.
Yeah. Well said. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, I'm going to, I see no more public comments on this. Oh, sorry, one more.
I feel like that I'm aligned with a lot of the comments that have been made. So I'm going to stay pretty brief because, you know, there are a lot of kids in town and the school is not available and as much people like to find out. Unless you want to teach your kids to jump a fence and actually press pass hopefully there, which is not available during the week, during the summer. You know, I see a lot of people coming to town, tourists. They're hanging up. They want to know where the park is, where they can take their family. If that's not existent. And I think part of the economic growth that you were talking about earlier on, a park would definitely help that because it would keep people in town versus having to drive 15, 20, however many minutes away just to get to McKinleyville. And then afterwards, families hungry, they want to go shopping. They want to do these different things. It's all going that way. You know, being here, you can easily walk across the street. There's things that I didn't even realize were over in that area. And I've been here for 14 years. I have two children and it's been definitely a topic of conversation of not being able to bring the community together with children. Because everyone thinks about tourism and people who are retired, which I completely understand, but there's also this entire basis of families that are not able to really congregate in a mutual area. And the fact that it was brought up, said 20 years ago or 24 years ago and nothing has even come of it. You know, my, I'll probably have grandkids before this thing even happens, you know? So I hope not, but my kids are nine and three. So I don't know how long it takes to even get something like that in effect. But I feel like it pushes out the people that are coming in to build the community. And, you know, it just, it helps us as a community, the people being able to get together in the area. I want you to be here, as mentioned, and I think developing that area and bringing more people to the museum, the library, and just keeping people in town would be beneficial for everyone.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to bring it back to the council. I mean, I think it's fabulous idea to pursue. Has everybody?
Absolutely.
I think I think it's a great idea. It sounds like there's been a need. It's been discussed in the past. And probably the sooner we can work on some, developing some proposals, the better. So, and I really want to thank Councilor Tuttle for bringing it forward as an idea and seeing that through. Yeah. Do we need to make a motion or where do you want to take that?
Yeah, well, certainly some kind of direction. But I think we want to weigh in a little bit. So currently Saunders Park is also utilized for Taste of Trinidad. And also some other cities have put on like a small concert or whatever in the summer. Sometimes they have a series of them. You know, in some other entertainment, it could be like a puppet show or whatever. So what I'm getting at is where the current configuration of the park is with the sidewalk area and the grassy area. To me, it seems like that that's a nice gathering point for the city. And ideally, if we can place the playground as we looked at before by the hillside and then possibly utilizing the court, the watching ball court. It seems that this way we can have both uses going on rather than possibly taking over the park and creating, you know, like a playground, basically. I mean, so I'm just saying, direction from the council would also be helpful as to, you know, how this would proceed as far as creating a playground that would take over a good part of the park or would be off to some. I don't know what you were thinking.
Yeah, so in an email with Angela and Trevor, her city planner, Trevor mentioned that it would have to be professionally designed because it would be a space that the public would come to. So we would have to have it designed for the whole park. And I would, I would encourage, yeah, this community to come together, all the different families and we could and all the different interest groups out there. They come together and find out what works in this list. Put it all together, put all our ideas in one place and then have that designer bring it all together and really make it a part of the whole community. Not just
That makes sense.
Not just a little playground in the corner, but yeah, make it so everyone.
Yeah, we need to see the conceptual design to be kind of the next phase. Maybe there's a couple of alternatives or, yeah.
But today, we're just really directing staff to then move, move forward and then we could reach out to the Trinidad Coastal Land Trust. So we could put it onto their agenda because they still need to approve the idea of modifying the park. Because they are the owners.
Yeah, that makes sense. Well, I would make a motion to proceed with the council's approval to explore the alternatives for a public playground at Saunders Park.
I'll second that.
And there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So that passes unanimously. Thank you, Ben Jacks. Yeah, great work. I'm going to go to item number five. This is the discussion decision to begin the recruitment process to fill expiring planning commissioner term. So anyone who's here this evening who wants to be a planning commissioner, we have opportunities for you. Dave or Eli, do you want to cover really quick what we're looking for?
Yeah, I can get started. Maybe Gabe wants to add to it. So we have a total of five planning commissioners. And the two of them, their terms are expiring in December. So the intent is to advertise the two can run again. And also any other interested members in the community that run for those two seats. The planning commissioners, the majority need to be city residents, but up to two could be from the greater Trinidad area. So Gabe, is there anything else to add?
That's it?
I think the only thing was there was that there might be the commissioners that are rolling off. It's not Chris and Tom. I think it's Tristan and Tom. Is that right, Gabe?
Yeah, I corrected the brackets.
Oh, you did? Okay, I'm sorry. I may have the order.
Tristan and Tom Hopkins outside city limits. One of the two that are currently seated outside the city limits. So in the event we, Tom, Trump wants to rerun, he can comply. But there are more than two. And if in-city residents apply and there's enough to fill the seats, that needs to be taken into consideration by the council.
Okay, all right. Any questions from the council on this? Any questions from the public or comments? All right, I'll bring it back to the council then. I'm going to go ahead and move to authorize staff to begin the recruitment process to solicit public interest in serving on the planning commission and bring letters of interest back to the council for appointment in January.
Second.
And there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the next topic is the November general election and the results from said election, I believe.
I'll be brief with this one. We're only, what, a week and a few days in? And I just put this in there because, you know, we've had some people ask. Of course, we've got two council members' seats that are going to be filled. And the tax measure was on the ballot as well. I'm not jumping to any conclusions. We're just watching the weekly results published by the county elections department every Friday. They put out their weekly results. So I have a link, I believe, at least in the notice that I sent regarding this meeting. So people, if they don't already know, they can go to the county's website and check on the weekly results of Measure L. But I think on the, what was it? The first week, it was approximately 70% in support of the measure, which is pretty good, which is pretty much in line where it was when it was approved four years ago. So that is positive news for anyone in support of the measure. That is the only report. Next month, what we're going to do is hopefully 30 days following the election, the county elections has to certify the results. And I believe that date does fall in line, that we'll have it early enough for our council meeting to be able to swear in the new members. We've, there's been times where we waited until January to swear council members in. But in this particular case, I think in the last couple of years ago, we just swarm in in December and the outgoing council members said their goodbyes and the new members were seated right away. There's no reason to wait if it's uncontested. So if that is the case and this council is okay with that, then that's what we do. We will hold the swearing in ceremony in December.
That sounded good to you, Jack and Steve?
I mean, I thought it was already decided. I thought some other races were decided that went uncontested. They're like, look, we're calling this thing. You know, it's statistically impossible for a write-in candidate to exceed those that have been voted on. So I would, yeah. I see no reason not to proceed with the December meeting.
Election.
Okay, okay, all right. And do we, any public comments, I guess, on the November election results? You're standing up. Okay.
Actually, I do have a question about item four. I was interested in the playground component of it, but what about the pickleball and the tennis ball?
Yeah, we took input on that. Good, good point, Bryce. Were we supposed to? I thought we were just taking community input on it? Or was there a vote or further action needed from the council?
Yeah. The purpose of having it on there was really to update you where we're at. So that is part of the Parks Grant. So it's estimated that the cost would be ballpark, I think, $62,000. The Parks Fund is like $170,000. The remainder of it would be utilized for the boardwalk. So anyway, tonight was the first time I heard of possibly doing the pickleball court in Saunders Park. So I don't know about the feasibility of that. But that's something that could be considered. We were considering just utilizing the tennis court area. And I was calling it a racket court so that it would end up being tennis and pickleball. They're both racket sports. One of the advantages to having both of them located by town hall is that like, for instance, in the case of balls or even rackets, sometimes people ask us if we have something and we do, and they can borrow. And the same thing could happen like with the pickleball. Is that, you know, picking out a couple of noise reducing rackets. And I certainly think we should require that they use the noise reducing rackets because it is close to the neighbors. And any way that we can cut back on the sound would be helpful. And then I think it was a great idea looking at Larson Park that was mentioned today. So, you know, we could see how they've done the lines there. And then, of course, we'll be going out to bid at the beginning of the year for that project. And then when we do go out to bid, for instance, Fortuna has recently put in pickleball courts and redid their tennis court. And they were very happy with that. So that's one of the contractors that we'll reach out to. And then Arcade, I think, is another one where we can have that contractor we'll reach out to. And in the meantime, we'll advertise it so that anyone can bid. But we just want to make sure that some of these other firms that have done pickleball and racket court do a bid so that we have more to choose from.
We may need to bring this back because it seems like we're having a lot of conversation and we're past the agenda item now. I don't know how that works, but usually now the people that wanted to talk about it aren't here. So we've taken their feedback. So I may suggest that we put this as a future agenda item and revisit and go into more detail. Katie, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm concerned that we're going to buy ourselves a parcel of trouble with the noise, even with the noise reducing rackets. I would see total devastation about that. I've never seen a pickleball court, so I have no idea. But everyone keeps mentioning noise.
Yeah.
And bam, 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 bam.
Well, you know, I mean, one of the advantages.
Just to say again, you guys, we're going into, going into detail on this again. It was agendaized. I apologize that I didn't catch that. Thank you, Bryce, for catching it, that we didn't go into the detail we needed to. And I'd like to, I'd like to suggest we put it as a future agenda item. I, yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, we can put it on, if you want, we can put it on in December and continue.
Yeah, just continue. Let's call it a continuation of this.
And then in the meantime, since it was mentioned about the possibility of Saunders Park. So, you know, think about that. And then if other people in the community can weigh in. And of course, we've got Patty here who is right by there. So, you know, maybe, because, for instance, we've got the library. And the library is a spot that you want to have quiet. And then maybe the pickleball court there is not a ideal place.
Yes, to add on that, when I was talking to Coastal Land Trust, that parcel of land was not made to have active activity. So even that playground, you couldn't have a soccer, you couldn't have baseball. And I feel like that's part of a competition. It wouldn't, you can't have active sporting events on that.
And just to be clear, all we did tonight was really, in essence, authorize to communicate with the land trust. We're interested. Right? That's all we did. Right? Right? We're not paving any tennis courts tonight or anything like that. Our decision was, do we want this for our community? We don't own the land. We don't have any control over the land, right?
Yeah.
Like, but that's the best place we've got to go. So I don't think we have to worry about, you know, design concepts or anything tonight. Tonight's decision was, hey, someone go to the land trust and say we want to talk.
Right.
But I agree with Cheryl that we're already that, like, that ship has sailed. So we need to.
Okay, so, and Bryce, was that, you had your hand raised? Was that like the point you were going to make or?
Just really briefly, I was getting on what Katie was saying. You ought to just get some decibel stuff.
Decibel, yeah.
Information about how many decibels the pickleball generate? And then what does that compare to as far as other sounds?
Yeah, so noise.
And friends of mine who play pickleball say those noise canceling paddles are effective. So to really honor the neighbors that are right behind that.
Yeah, so maybe we try it both ways, but that's part of the discussion we can have in December. Okay, so future agenda items, definitely tennis, pickleball. Any other future agenda items that you want to tee up right now? Otherwise, send them to staff or myself. Any public agenda, any agenda items that the public would like to see us discuss in the future? I see nothing. So with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.